Good morning. It is nine o'clock. It's April 30th. We're here for our regular scheduled county commissioner meeting. The three commissioners are all present. Our administrator, Mr. Danzel, and our clerk of the board. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask everybody to please rise and join in the pledge.
Aye. I am the president, the chief of the five of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty to judge as for all.
Just a quick reminder, have you guys got your phones on silent?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, at this time, we'll adopt the current agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Then a motion of second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have public comment. Is there anybody in the room for public comment?
Good morning, commissioners. Beautiful day today. I am not going to speak on what's been happening in the news because most of us really don't know. We live in a society today that wants affirmation, but I'm someone who's always seeked and sought for truth. That is what I believe the people want. We live in a time when our media picks winners and losers, even here in Franklin County, and it's very disturbing because someone had pointed me out to the auditor's blog spot, and so I went and saw that, and I was able to see a lot of what's been adjudicated that the people don't know about. And I'm going to actually put that link on my Facebook page, Lawanda Hatch. I'm from Precinct 100, and make that public. So anyone that wants to find an easy link to his blog spot, I think it's really important. I know that there's a $2 million shortfall evidently, couple of companies double billed us. If it's the same company that's helping with the health, they're in the jail that was years ago, I'm not sure, but they are also the same company that brought the needle share and the Narcan to Kennewick on their own private company with an NGO, and that's caused a real homeless problem in Kennewick, that we don't have as much addicts on our streets, which is really a good thing. But I really hope that everybody looks for truth, and I've tried to bring it because the media doesn't. And for that, I've had a commissioner sue me by proxy, and I won in a summary judgment because I seek for truth and I keep my receipts. And I've had Commissioner Baumann spread lies about me because he wants power. He doesn't want truth. He's told people he's seen my car at a client's house and told them things about me that were untrue. He's told things to people that with low information. He's got people that go out there and spread lies about me, takes people to dinner to tell lies about me because I've tried to bring the truth. There's no win for me. I've not done this for any benefit to me. It's actually harmed my business and my ability to do it, to do that. But because I believe in the truth, I'm going to continue to state it because the people deserve it, and we don't have a media that does it, that tells it. So, thank you, commissioners. I hope that this upcoming issue is adjudicated. I believe in due process, and once that is, that we can find the truth and know the truth in a fair process, and I say these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Good morning.
Good morning, sirs. I just want to address an issue. My name is Ryan Jacobs. I'm from Benton County, but there is an issue with Mere Ministries, which is based out of Richland, Washington, and I just wanted to ask if the commissioners have come up with a plan to be able to help Mere Ministries, which is going to be opening a ranch in North Basco, Franklin County, sorry, and that the farmers around it can still do their business with, sorry, I'm nervous, with, without impunity, and that the ranch that Mere Ministries has bought can still function. And right now, I'm currently working with Representative April Connors, we're trying to come up with an idea because I get it. I get it on one hand that we're going to have 20 to 30 girls at this ranch, I won't say where, and at the same time, all the farmers around them, I can't remember if it's an RCW or what it is, they can't spray anymore because of how many, the population of those girls at that ranch. So, I just don't know how to, what the fix is, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention and see if we can figure that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing nobody coming forward, we don't have any phones, ma'am. Move down to the approval of the consent agenda, and I believe there are six items on the consent agenda today, no, five items.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the consent agenda items one through five as presented.
Second.
Been a motion of second for the five items on the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Takes us down to regular business, which we have none today. Commissioner Administrator updates, Mr. Danzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commission members attended the Franklin County Public Hospital District Number One's new ambulance unveiling in Cornell. The Board of Commissioners allocated approximately $1.5 million a couple of years back for the purchase of three ambulances in total using ARPA funds. This was the first of the three, and it was pretty incredible actually to attend that. It was equipped with power-assisted loading system that holds 600 pounds and automatically lowers, so it's quite a change for the EMTs and the first responders for the entire county, but I thought it was well-attended, and Lori Hales that up there in Cornell really put on a great event, and they had a, I didn't know this, they had a rolling-in ceremony is what it's called, where they push in the new ambulance, and it dates back to when it was horse and buggy, and the horses had to back in, and so it's kind of carried down throughout the generations, and it was just remarkable to see the whole, kind of get the history of that, but also see so many dedicated professionals that went from a volunteer organization into this organization where they haven't lifted the levee lid, and on purpose. They wanted, they understand that the folks out there cannot afford that, and they're trying to operate from within their means, and so this ARPA funding went a very long way to be able to invest in their future, and they were incredibly grateful. So that was a great thing to be able to attend. I met with auditor Beaton and members of the auditor staff to discuss the budget. I think that we need to begin that process already. I think that it'll be a good idea to monitor the sales tax revenues as we move on into the summer months here, but I think we should get on the books sooner rather than later, all the budget dates, so that we're able to be proactive rather than reactive. It's no secret, the entire state of Washington, all the municipalities are down in revenue, and expenses continue, so just want to put that on your radar. I met with IS Director Bo Beckley to discuss various software programs. Some of these programs are coming up for renewal. I will, as we get closer to that, I will keep you posted. A lot of them run kind of parallel with state funding year, so like June to June, July 1st, which you'd have an idea of what, if there are going to be more in costs, or if it's going to be something that we even want to continue with, so I'll bring that to your attention when that happens. I coordinated with Ms. McKenzie Lloyd and Margot Wilder, HR Director, to finalize Commander, now Chief Harmon's contract, and I will need just a little bit more time on Tri-Cities monitoring. But other than that, I did want to pass along that news and that the Cornell ambulance rollout was well-attended and something worthwhile.
Thank you. Commissioner Baumann?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As our administrator said, really special, special program that the Public Hospital District Number One put on up there, and thank you to Lori for the invitation. Never had a chance to even be at a thing like that, and to be asked to participate was really, really fun. I know that Pasco's done that a number of times. They've, they bought some new apparatus here recently, and I know they had several of those, and it's pretty special. It's neat for the community to be able to come out and, and participate in that process, and so thank you for that invitation. Had meetings this last week with the auditor, treasurer, assessor, PA's office, clerk's office, and one of the things that I know that I discussed with, with a number of the different ones was about some of the, the software programs that we have and some of the needs that are there to, just trying to figure out, you know, you, you get the renewal notice every year, and how much is, how much is needed, and how much is it, we just, well, that's what we did last year. So appreciate you being diligent about that and, and looking at that. Also met with the coroner, got to get an update on, on where the, the morgue building is, and they're coming right along on that building. They're just about to the stage where they'll pour the slab, the underground plumbing and so forth inside the building is nearly complete, and so they're just about to pour that slab, so thankful to see that coming along. Had multiple meetings with now Chief Harmon and Captain Jansky in the jail. Also met with, there's five squads in the jail. I met with A, B, C, and D squads, and about half of E squad, and was very thankful to have that opportunity at now Chief's invitation to come and visit with them, got to talk to them and, and answer questions and try to be a little bit of troubled waters right now, and try to, try to answer some questions that they had, and so I'm excited to, to tell you that, to get to watch Chief Harmon's leadership is remarkable, to get to watch it to that level, and they've been working on design on several different fronts. There's a number of our neighboring jurisdictions that have reached out and asked if they could help in different ways, and there's artists on, in different jurisdictions that have asked if they could, could be a part or help them, and so I'm excited to tell you. I was informed this morning that they have chosen a new badge design. It will be a shield, and so they've chosen that design, and so they are working with vendors already to, to see when, when they can get that, and, and so they are also close to decisions on a patch and a uniform design, and, and so it's been, it's been enjoyable to watch Chief Harmon and Captain Jansky lead them through that process, and so I'm excited to report to you that morale is very high, and they, they love their, they love their leadership, and so with that, Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Mullen?
So I'm excited to see that the ambulance did get delivered to, to Cornell, and it's much needed and well-deserved, so I'm very happy about that. This week, I have the Columbia Behavioral Health Meeting tomorrow morning at nine, followed by Long-Term Aging and Care. There is open public comment during that time if anybody is interested. Continue to take calls on property value assessments and look forward to having a good discussion with the auditor, I'm sorry, the assessor on our property assessments. Looking forward to having that discussion. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Last week, pretty light week, but just want to thank Mr. Danzel and Mr. Baumann for attending that hospital district unveiling of the first ambulance delivered to Franklin County. We got two more coming, and my wife is being a volunteer for this, very grateful that they got this apparatus in there, this mechanical loading of these cots, so the people don't have to lift them in the ambulance anymore. If you've seen my wife, you'd know why I'm very thankful. She's 5'2", 105 pounds dripping wet, and she goes on a lot of ambulance calls. I'm very thankful of this. And I want to give credit where credit is due. When this was all being discussed about what we were going to do with these ARPA funds, I met and talked with a man who's present today in the room, George Docstetter, and George is the one that said, "You should be looking at getting some new ambulances," and that is why we looked into it. Our citizens give us the best ideas, and I want to thank George for that idea, and you should be getting all the credit, sir. So thank you for bringing that up so we got it done. Ben Franklin, workforce development, and I want to congratulate Chief Harmon on doing the best job possibly on this transition. He was the commander of the jail, he still is the commander of the jail, now he's the head, the chief commander of the jail, and the morale is up, and I want to thank Mr. Baumann for interacting and seeing that. We're all going to go visit the jail, and we're all going to be giving them a high five and keep up the good work. The last thing I want to report on is Glade Road. I've almost witnessed two head-on collisions on Glade Road. Equipment is moving heavily up and down the Glade Road. We need turnouts immediately, and we have got to have safe roadways. I got grandchildren now that are, I got learning permits. I do not want these unsafe roads. We have got to get the farmers to start pulling off and letting these lines of cars, they're sometimes a half a mile or a mile deep, get by. We have got to be courteous farming, but they've also got to realize that we have to get to another field to work our field. They have to be patient on the road. Don't leave when you got to be at the meeting, at the time of the meeting. Give yourself ample time. You not, you don't know what you're going to run into, give yourself ample time, because if you don't, you're going to be on one of those cots in this new ambulance, so please, let's keep our roadways safe. Thank you. That's the end of my report. I'm sorry, but this, this is not.
My link is not working, so.
Thank you. Good then, okay, thank you. All right, next up is public comment. Anybody for public comment?
Just want to see how concerned I am for my county. This has been going on for years. It loses confidence of voters, it loses confidence of taxpayers. One of the things that we vote for each of you individually, for other electeds, is that you work together, and this is something that deeply concerns me. I have not seen that. I'm not going to lay it at anybody's feet specifically, but I do believe I speak for a lot of people. I'll wait till I have eye contact. Well, let the record show that somehow the county administrators did not want to make eye contact with a taxpayer. Okay, thank you.
The county administrator is sitting there, ma'am.
The county commissioners. Thank you, Rocky. I have walked alongside each and every one of you. We're not going to always agree. Mr. Baumann, please, your attention. I will wait and I will reclaim my time. This is a problem. When we don't understand rules and we don't respect other people, this is what destroys our county. And there are people in this room that need to help with that. I still respect your positions. I forgave an awful lot of cruelty, actually. My name was smeared inappropriately when an attorney talks about bylaws and things that we need to do, and as a leader of the Civil Service Commission, I, I did that, and I was smeared in the paper, in the county graphic, from someone who doesn't know the truth. I would like to work out the truth. I think it's important. I'm going to continue to watch and be a concerned citizen, not going to try to create problems, but I'm going to ask you to work together regardless of the agreements or disagreements because the county citizens need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
George Docstetter, South Landing Road. I know what you're talking about on Glade Road. It's the same thing on Taylor Flats, but the question I've got, and it was talked about over a year ago, and I know we have to coordinate with the city, but something needs to be done with the intersection there at Douglas Fruit. Let's try to get off a dirt road going north in the morning or late in the afternoon when all the labors are going up and down that road, and there's been so many near misses and people slamming on brakes because people get impatient trying to get out and the line's backed up. So we need to find out where we're at with the city. We need to get something done. That's probably the worst intersection in the whole county, and at the wrong time of the day, I don't even go that way. I turn around, if I'm coming from the hospital in Richland after treatment, I go to Fourth Street and come out early in the morning because instead of taking Road 100 and cutting across, it's not worth the time you sit there and wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, public comment? Seeing no other public comment, we'll move down. I believe we have an executive session today, Mr. Briggs?
Yes. We would need an executive session, our RCW 423110, I triple I litigation. So we would need myself, the board, the county administrator, we would need the clerk of the board, I guess upstairs to keep time, and I don't know, oh, are we doing the one for the assessor? Okay, if we're doing the one for the assessor, that would be under I, I as well.
So we're needing two executive sessions?
Two executive sessions.
Can they be covered under the same timeframe, or do we need to come out and go back in?
We would, we could cover the same timeframe, but we need to call out two different RCWs because one's actual litigation and one's threatened litigation, and we would also need to, sorry, John, we need to kick you out after the first executive session. We do yours first, but, so I, I guess we would need two timeframes, and I just answered my question.
So how much time do we need? And everybody's in the one except for John, and then John's in the other one?
John, John could actually probably tell us how much he, how much time he would need for his.
I would say at least 15 minutes.
Okay.
Okay, 15 minutes.
And for the second?
Uh, 10.
Okay, so.
We'll just say 30 to be safe, yeah.
Half hour. So we'll go into executive session at 9:23, and we will come out at 9:53.
And we listed everyone that's going to be there, myself, county administrator, John, clerk of the board's going to be upstairs, and then I believe Mr. Sands is going to participate as well.
So at this time, we'll recess into executive session. So at this time, we'll recess into executive session.
Good morning. It was brought to our attention that the announcement for the extension of the executive session. The audio was not live, well it was live but it was muted. Therefore, I need to announce that the extension of the second executive session under RCW 4230 1110 1II. The participants will be the same except for the assessor. It will be scheduled to return at ten ten.
We have come out of the executive session with no decisions being made and at this time is there any other business for the good of the county? At this time, I'll adjourn the meeting.